Catherine, are you still on?
I am. Did I miss it?
Hello?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Were you waiting?
Yes, I thought that they were gonna come back in session at 6:00.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So, they actually finished a lot earlier than... Yeah, so, um, let's see, there's people on as well, and I'm just gonna make an announcement.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay. So I just wanted to share with everyone that's still on that the board actually came back from closed session much earlier than expected. They were actually finished by 5:00 PM. And they did, um, report out, the clerk of the board reported out that the board made a unanimous approval. And it was four people that voted yes, and one person absent, trustee Phillips was absent. And the recommendation was that Dr. Kim Moses be appointed as the interim associate superintendent effective December the 18th, which will be my last day as well. They also reported out that, um, Kim Moses, her contract will be in the next open public meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. So again, it was a unanimous approval for Dr. Kim Moses to be the interim superintendent effective December the 18th, which is my last day. And then her contract will come back on October the 11th with the open public meeting. Thank you so much, and we apologize that it ended so early.
Paul Mancing, who's the director of our state and federal programs, and also Veronica Vega, who's our senior administrative assistant. They're gonna support us this evening with technology. I'd like to just review first. Uh, this is gonna be a little small for those of you on the back, but I'm gonna read it for you. Uh, our agenda today and what we aim to do together. Um, we can do a whip around with introductions, but it's a large group and, um, you may know each other. Uh, I see we have parents, students, we have cabinet members in the back, cabinet members. They'll intermingle when we start to gather data. Thank you for supporting and being here tonight. I'd like to, uh, recognize our esteemed board members, our president of the board, Jim Hefner Gold. And our trustee for this area, uh, trustee Leslie Reckler. And shortly we will be joined by our superintendent, Dr. Chris Hurst. He is finishing up tonight's board meeting. Did I miss any? We're good. Okay. All right. Well, the reason why we're here tonight is because we actually, come on in, we have some space up here. We have been working over the last few years to address our budget alignment with our resources and also ensuring that we have a budget that is not structurally deficient. Um, we did great work last year with trimming down our budget so that we can be closer to fiscal solvency. And we'll continue that work this year, um, in trying to locate areas in which to trim more so that we can work towards a balanced budget for our district. And this is important because, um, without a balanced budget, we cannot, without a balanced budget, it is difficult to say with certainty that we can meet all of our obligations. Uh, when we have more expenses than revenue, uh, we find ourselves in a situation where, uh, we are out of balance and we're working to get back into balance. So, um, our guiding mission tonight is to talk about the allocation of our fiscal resources because it's critical to improving student outcomes, and it's also critical, uh, in order to achieve equity of educational outcomes. Uh, we'd like you to share your voice tonight. We're gonna do that a number of different ways. You'll talk at your table, you'll use the post-its. Um, all of the ideas and feedback that you shared this evening will be taken back in order to consider as we begin to move forward with our budget committee, our school board, and our cabinet team to make recommendations of how to proceed in addressing our structural deficits. So we have four outcomes that, objectives that we strive to accomplish this evening. And, it's a little warm in here. I don't know if we can adjust the air.
It's on.
It's on, okay.
It's working.
Okay, bear with us. Okay. Uh, so, the first meeting objective we'd like to have is I'm going to provide an update to you on our budget and our fiscal solvency plan. Um, following that, I'm going to present an overview of the purpose-based budgeting process. This is the process by which this year we are going to examine our revenues, our expenditures, and try to find ways to trim down. Um, and then we are going to review our strategic plan because that is critical to ensuring that we're looking in the right places for where we can trim. Uh, we'll get feedback on the strategic goals from you. Uh, the data that we collect and the ideas that you share this evening are going to support us with aligning priorities and resources for our schools and for our students, uh, for our future budget. Uh, so this evening, the agenda is here on this, on the from ETHM board, uh, we're going to start with our land, labor, and body acknowledgement. We've already reviewed our objectives. Uh, we will then move into the budget presentation and some discussion time. Following that, I'll present to you the information on purpose-based budgeting. And through that process, we'll examine our strategic plan together. And we'll ask you to share your ideas that relate to our strategic plan and our resources. Um, we will end, in that session and then restart with our open budget discussion at 7:30. And this will just be time for you to share things that, um, are related to our budget that you'd like to bring to the forefront for our district leaders today. Um, all of the questions that I have are just suggested guidance questions. During the end of our, uh, time together, you can really open it up to any issues that are important to you. Uh, we aim to finish tonight at 8 o'clock, so we're looking to get through all of this information together and have enough time at the end to share with you. So I'll start with the land acknowledgement, and I'm gonna acknowledge our superintendent, Dr. Hurst, who has just arrived. All right, so, uh, we start our meetings with the land acknowledgement and the labor and body recognition. Uh, this is important to our work together as a district in ensuring that everyone is equitably valued and that we give, pay honor and, uh, respect to those who have come before us. So I'll read the land acknowledgement, and then I'll ask if President Pittfall will read the labor and body recognition. So the land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenyo, Moetma, Carcun, Olone people and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Labor and body recognition acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against the will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States.
Thank you. The author of those, uh, statements is Dr. Rachel Rogers-Ard. She is our equity and anti-racism consultant, and we are grateful for her work with our district. So I am going to, uh, start with the first part of our presentation. We will stop after we present some brief budget information so that you can ask any questions you have as it relates to what we're sharing with you in these first few slides about our funding factors and also about our fiscal solvency plan. Um, so the first thing I wanted to lift up is some of our funding factors. How do schools get their money? And why do we have so little of it? Uh, the, the way in which schools are funded for our operating budget is through the average daily attendance based upon our enrollment. So the number of students we have enrolled multiplied by the rate of daily attendance creates a number that we call the ADA, the average daily attendance. And that number is what the state uses to fund our per pupil revenue. So, I wanted to point out that, um, in 2018-19, West Contra Costa had 28,121 students. In this past full year, West Contra Costa had 25,574 students. We are experiencing declining enrollment, and this is the trend across the state. It isn't something that we're dealing with alone. We are, uh, across our state having less students to serve. When you have less students to serve, you also get less revenue. Um, one of our issues of the district is as our enrollment declined, our services have maintained the same. And because services have maintained the same and the revenue has decreased, we're then out of we're then out of balance with what we expend and what we bring in, which is what we're trying to address tonight. So I just want to lift up that we've had a decrease of about 425 students per year for the last six years. And that takes a financial toll on what we receive from our state funding to operate our schools and operate our departments and programs across the district. The 23-24 ADA was funded on a three-year average. The state gives us an option. We can fund our ADA based upon the three-year prior average or the current year's ADA, whichever is higher. Because we're in the state of declining enrollment, we've been relying on the three-year average to fund our school. And that has been working better for us because if you notice, the three-year average is more than the actual ADA that we have. So in 23-24, we were funded on that three-year average for 24,721 students. But actually, our ADA during this past school year was 23,474 students. We were funded at an increased rate because of that average. Unfortunately, what's happening is each year, this number is getting closer to this number because the decline continues. And next year, with the three-year average, we're expected to have a funded ADA of 23,641 students, which means that we're again losing money from ADA. Unless we have a miraculous enrollment boom and we're able to go beyond that average number. So we pretty much know right now what we're expecting our ADA to be next year because we're relying on that three-year average. So when we talk about revenue, that's how we calculate it. I put a green band around the revenue that will be the average of what we expect next year's to be. All right. And then there's COLA. So if you've been paying attention to the budget, you know that over the last couple of years, we've been receiving COLA from, well, not last year, prior two years, from the state because they were experiencing the boom. That COLA that we received is only funded in our ADA. So I wanted to show here that in 23-24, we were assigned a COLA of 8.22%. Now, what we think that would mean is we get 8.22% more revenue. The reality is that is not what we realized. When you look at our 22-23 revenues, it was 330.5 million. When you look at our 23-24 revenues, it's 344. Well, 345 million. That's a difference of 14.4 million, which is an increase of only 4.36%. So when people say we got an increase of 8.22%, if you look at our real numbers, we didn't realize that actual amount. Our increase was only 4.4%. Moving forward, if our revenue continues to, well, if the COLA is applied and we're declining, we will experience much the same. What we also experienced last year is we expected that this year we would have about 3.76% COLA. But due to a downturn in the economy and the market, we were only able to receive 1.07% COLA from the state, which means that the money that we originally built our budget bond, the 3.07, the 3.76%, we had to then shift all of our budgets to subtract out those extra percentage points because the COLA for this year was decreased by 2.7%. Just some information about doing the budget. Now, in education, we have several different resources. We have our general fund unrestricted expenditures, which is the money we use to pay for our basic education program. It is the money that pays teachers, the money that pays for the upkeep of our buildings. It's the money that pays for the books and materials and supplies within our classrooms. These are the things that we have to provide. It pays for custodians because they have to have clean, safe schools. When we look at just the unrestricted budget, what we see is that the largest components of the budget is that we pay the people who provide the services for our schools and our students. 82.9% of our general fund unrestricted budget is salary and benefits. Therefore, when we look into making cuts, we often have to look at those resources first. Last year, we identified $19 million in cuts. About, if I remember correctly, about 10 million of those were in salaries. We don't believe we can look towards our next fiscal solvency move and cut people. We've done that. We now have to find other ways to trim, which is why it's so important that you're here tonight to give us your ideas on how we move forward with that. So why do we need reductions? Why do we still need a fiscal solvency plan? Well, we, the Board approved a two-year fiscal solvency plan. The first year, we were directed to cut 19 million and year two, we're directed to cut 7 million. This is how we are going to balance our revenue with our expenditures so that we don't find ourselves in a fiscal crisis. This year, our projected fund is $7.5 million. Now, that $7.5 million deficit is after we use our reserves to help us to pay this year's bills. The expenditures that we have planned for are expected to equal $281.3 million without reductions. So we're going to need to address that so that we can be balanced. We're projected to need a $7.7 million contribution in our next full year, even after $7 million in reductions that will be suggested for next full year. So even though we're looking for ways to reduce, we're still going to need to pull money from our reserves in order to meet our obligations for next year. We also may need to make further adjustments in '26-27 if our budget and enrollment projections hold true. Now, I don't want to paint a picture of gloom and doom because the unrestricted fund isn't our only fund. We have restricted resources. We have benefactors and funders that support us to do great things in our school. But when we look at the money that we need to run our school, that's where we really have to trim things and get within budget. So this is our NYPD, this multi-year projection. The multi-year projection is how we present the budget to the County Office of Education for approval. So I'm sorry, this is so small, but you do have access to this through your QR code and your links if you want to examine it further. But what you're looking at here is our projections for the current year and the three out-years. The county requires that we submit our budget three years at a time and that we show that each year, we are able to hold a 3% reserve for economic uncertainty. So you'll see that we have balances, ending balances that are in the millions. But the reality is the state says, this little pink line here, we have to keep this money in the bank in case of an economic uncertain period. So here, we're showing that our ending balance would be 19.5 million, but 15.3 million, we can't touch. What we're ending in this first year is $4 million, which is going to roll up to this year. Originally, we planned to contribute over 11 million from our reserves in year two, but because we predict that we're going to have fund balance, we're able to reduce that 11 million down to 7.6 million. So we'll see here that even though we look like we're ending with a positive fund balance or we predict that we'll end with a positive fund balance, the reality is we're still short in the coming year and we're still using reserves in this year. So really quickly, I know it's hot, I'm trying to move forward. But this year alone, we expect our revenues will be $353 million. We have expenditures totaling $277 million. So you look at this picture and you're like, great, we have $76 million left. We're not upside down. But the reality is, we have to contribute to restricted programs by law. The restricted programs that we have to contribute to is routine restricted maintenance and special education. So this money is not negotiable. They have to be able to operate our programs for maintenance. They have to be able to operate our programs for special ed. So where they fall short, we must make them whole. So even though we had 76 million left over from our district expenditures, we have further responsibilities to take care of these programs. And this year, that responsibility is expected to total $94.5 million, which is how we get to our structural deficit and which is why we need this $11.9, $11.5 million contribution. This repeats in each of our years. In year two, we need 7.7 million from reserves. And year three, we're going to be 8.6 million in reserves. And that's even after we identify 7 million to reduce because this is how that works out. So in our 25-26 school year, we have expenditures at 274 million. But the reality is when we break out our expenditures for the 25-26 school year, what we see is that we have expenditures here, but we've also written in our reductions so that after reductions, it's $274 million. Without these reductions that we need to identify, this amount jumps to $281 million. But we didn't budget for that because we expect to have reductions. That brings the expenditures down. So that is our fiscal picture and why we have a fiscal solvency plan. I'll stop here for about five minutes of questions. If anybody needs clarity or has deeper questions about our budget numbers or our fiscal solvency plan. If so, just let me know.
Question about ADA. So is it a situation that enrollment is, for example, increasing and maybe rates dropping? Or are they both dropping?
They are both dropping. However, our trend is that they're both dropping. This year, we actually added a number of new TK classrooms. So you don't see a dip in enrollment here. 21-22 enrollment was 26,311. 22-23, we had a dip of about a little more than 525,733. This year, we did not have a dip because we're growing. We have a TK expansion program. So we added TK students, so it doesn't show a decline in enrollment. But the reality is adding all of those additional classrooms in the expansion actually increased expenditures as well. So we're hoping to continue to increase students, but we know that the reason why we did not have a dip here or a significant dip here is because we're continuing to enroll TK students. So we did dip just under 200 students, but it was much better than the prior year. We do expect that we're going to have a minor dip next year as well, in line with what we experienced this year, even though we're growing. So that is the picture of enrollment. And then ADA, this is our actual ADA in the second row here. And this is the funded ADA, which is the three-year average in that next row. Thank you for the question. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, to follow up on that. So is there a way for us to increase enrollment without increasing the actual physical students coming to the school, but just increasing their attendance? I'm thinking like truancy.
Yes, absolutely. If we could increase, I didn't do percentages, I should have done percentages. Prior to the pandemic, we were averaging about, I'm pulling from memory, so these won't be exact figures, but I would say about 95% daily attendance rate. And I think currently, we're at 91? Approximately 91. I can get those numbers for you. But if we could get back to even just that 95 rate, it would absolutely add more ADA. And we've been working on truancy and we've been working on attendance campaigns and working directly with our principals to really support families and students that have attendance issues. But we just haven't seen the large number of increases in the average daily attendance that we need to see. Right? Any other question? Yes?
Would you be able to explain to the audience COLA, what COLA is, and the difference between restricted and unrestricted funds and maybe some examples of each?
Absolutely. So COLA is the Cost of Living Adjustment and it is derived from the Cost of Living Adjustment that's given to our citizens on social security. It's based upon the federal index, purchasing index. And it is calculated quarterly by the, what do we call them? By the officials who set the rates for schools. For example, FICMAT, the legislature, they look at those and adjust them as the rate, as the market fluctuates. So COLA is based upon market fluctuation and the adjustments to COLA are directly related to where we are in our economy. But we don't get to pick that number. The number is given to us and the number is adjusted based upon the health of our economy. So that is where COLA comes from. And the reductions are, there is a formula that they use in order to determine whether COLA is going to go up or down. And everybody across the state must use the same COLA because it's assigned through the legislature through these indexes that they're paying attention to. Restricted and unrestricted, let's see if I can go there. So what you see here are unrestricted funds. These are called our Local Control Funding Formula Revenue. This is the money that we get to run our schools. It's called unrestricted because we don't have any limitations on it. We can use this money to pay for whatever we need to pay for in order to build our program within our school. On the other side of the house, we have restricted resources. These are grants that typically come from the state or from the federal government or from private benefactors like Chevron, Chamberlain Foundation, Sully Foundation, people that give us money for specific purposes. And the funding is called restricted because you can only spend the money on the programs that are identified under the umbrella of that grant or that program. An example of an unrestricted resource would be we have to pay for our utilities. We have to pay for our classroom teachers that are providing core instruction. We have to pay for the materials and curriculum, textbooks and, textbooks and the guides that provide our basic instruction for students every day. Those are examples of things that we have to put in our unrestricted fund because those are things that we have to have. On the restricted side of the house, I'll use an example. We just got a grant for literacy coaches in some of our most intensive schools. The grant came from the state. The grant was a total of $3.4 million. But the $3.4 million is strictly for the identified schools. I think there may be, Catherine, you know how many we have? I think between seven and 10 schools to have coaches for the next few years. But that $3.4 million can only be used to pay for those coaches and the work of the coaches to support the students at those schools that are underperforming. So that's an example of a restricted resource. It's a lot of money and we're glad to have it, but we cannot mingle it with the unrestricted general fund. It can only be used for what the state has set forth for it to serve, for how it's to be served for students. Thank you for the question. Any other questions? Yes?
I remember when I was in high school, the California Lottery announced that they were going to fund schools. And I'm continuing to see lots of Powerball lottery winpaws. Let's ask, did we get that money?
We do. And I would need Jeff, our fiscal director here, to name the numbers for you. I don't have them stamped in my memory, but I do know both. So there are some lottery funds, the restricted lottery funds, I believe, So there are some lottery funds, uh, the restricted lottery funds, I believe, have to pay for curriculum. Um, they have to pay for the textbooks that we use to deliver our, our curriculum. Those are the restricted lottery funds. There are also unrestricted lottery funds that we can use to supplement our unrestricted, um, uh, expenditures. And I know for, um, a fact that this year, we use the unrestricted lottery fund to pay some of the utilities because they're rising. And we use the unrestricted lottery funds to pay for transportation for our special education students because that was rising up. So when we get, that, that is a great example. And we do have some grants that are also liberal that we can use sometimes to supplement, um, our unrestricted fund. But they're usually temporary, so they're almost like a reserve in that fact. And the lottery money, we can count on it, but the amount that we get depends upon how many lottery tickets they sell. So in some years, we might get a large amount of unrestricted. And in other years, that amount may be reduced because of, you know, the popularity of the program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Yeah. Can you explain the variance between, uh, assigned COLA and, and, um, the effect? Because it seems like, uh, the assign, just back of the envelope, it's around, you're getting about, so we're getting about fifty percent of what was assigned. So where did, where's the next, um, where did it go?
It didn't go anywhere. So, uh, so what is happening is we only get COLA for our ADA. So our, our ADA is dropping, so we aren't realizing the full COLA because we have less students. So this is the assigned COLA, right? They gave us eight point two-two percent. But when we added the eight point two-two percent to our revenue, right? When we compared the revenue year over year, the difference is not eight point. We didn't actually realize eight point two-two because the revenue dropped. We only realized four point three-seven. Okay? All right, last question and I'm going to move on.
Just going back to ADA, does that ADA percentage include students?
The high school calculation is a little complicated. They both get credit for periods and full days. I would probably need, I don't know, can I defer to?
I, what the question, no, the question, I don't know the calculation. You get a truancy letter at two weeks' period.
Yes.
So we calculate this truant by a period, not a day.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm happy to read with Dr. Nozis on that calculation.
Yes, and, and what I can tell you is, is schedule plays a role in ADA. For example, if we have a student who is not enrolled in, let's say we have some seniors that they have enough credit. So they might only take a couple of classes in their final semester of high school. Well, the reality is, if the student is taking half the course load, even though they've already achieved their credit, so they don't need to go to school for a full day, we only get a half a day ADA for those students if they attend those classes. So there's several different moving pieces to that. And our, um, expert is Kim Chamberlain. She's the one who helps us with the calculation, so I can follow up with her. Okay? All right, we can take more budget questions at the end, but I'm going to move along and just, uh, try and share with you. Oh, I didn't check on Zoom. Were there any questions on Zoom? I'm sorry, I forgot. We're also virtual for those who couldn't attend in person. No?
No.
Okay. All right, so, um, let me get back to you. Okay, we're going to talk about aligning our resources to meet our goals. And I'm going to try to go quickly. This is, um, the beginning of this information is just for you to understand what the budget committee is moving into. And I also want to share that you're invited to come to those meetings as well. Those are actual board meetings, there is a board subcommittee. Um, but you can join by Zoom, you can listen in. Um, the board and the committee members are the only ones that really are taking action. But they're very informative and you'll hear about our progress in moving forward with the budget if you attend. Um, so we're going to talk about aligning our resources and using a process called purpose-based budgeting. Um, what, what is purpose-based budgeting? Um, it's a systematic approach to focus on the resources of our operation to ensure that we can still accomplish our mission as we identify ways to trim our budget. In our district, we have our strategic plan as a guide. So what we'll be working on over the next few months is looking at our identified goals and strategies, thinking about our multi-year implementation plan of those goals and strategies. And then we'll be looking to place things into categories according to our instructional focus and establish levels of expenditures. So we'll be looking at our programs under the large umbrella. And then we'll be looking at our, uh, programs and expenditures and services on a, uh, more detailed level in order to try and find ways to be more credible. Um, so why do we use this process? Well, we can identify, uh, reductions from an organizational lens. We can make sure we can accomplish our mission and be real careful about, uh, where we select to, uh, dig deeper for, uh, trimming. We can focus our, um, uh, we'll focus our fiscal resources on our organizational purpose and stay in line with our priorities. The decisions are guided by a transparent criteria. It's our attempt not to have individuals having a more weight to how things are decided, but using, uh, a rubric, so to speak, and evaluating what a program does or what a service does or what a position does and how it impacts or enhances our strategic plan and our district goals. And that's also going to help us evaluate program effectiveness across our system. Um, so who's going to engage in this process? Everyone. Um, we'll have district staff, students, families, uh, the budget committee and board trustees. Our labor partners are on the budget committee so that they can have a voice. And our community partners as well, through the California Community School Partnership, as well as our CDOs that will fit in our school. Um, so when will we engage in this work? So I put here the community forums engagement. But as I mentioned on the initial flyer announcing tonight, there was also a date publicized for the actual budget committee. But what we're trying to do is give you the updates, share with you the process. We're going to hold a second meeting on the twenty-ninth at the end of this month. Where we're going to share with you what the budget design tool looks like or the budget decision tool looks like, uh, review some data. And, um, I will be sharing with, collecting data from you to share with the other stakeholder groups so that as decisions are made and discussions are had, your voices are at the forefront of, of, um, what, where we land. Uh, and in the final, but, community forum, we'll present to you, uh, your feedback and the committee feedback and review a preliminary priorities list. We hope to be able to do that in December. But we do realize that this is going to be work that requires a lot of time and in-depth discussion. So, um, we're going to do our best to meet that requirement. Um, so what will we do? We'll do a programs and services review. Uh, and when I say services, I mean the full gamut. I mean examining departments, I mean examining, um, uh, programs. Uh, but what we're primarily looking at is things that we fund in the restricted fund. I'm sorry, in the unrestricted fund. So there are things that the restricted monies pay for that if we cut them, they won't really help us because they don't add to our operating budget. So we're really limited in what we all, we're looking at the expenses in that general budget. In some cases, we could shift things over to restricted money. But we can only do that if there is a, a program on the restricted side that matches what we aim to do. So it's like putting a puzzle together, which we do as often as we can. All right, so I wanted to, this is where you'll get some input now. Uh, I want to review with you some of the major components of our strategic plan and get some of your feedback. There's a lot more of you than I expected, but that is great. We'll get some more posters up on the other side of the room maybe so that we can capture, um, your ideas on post-its. Um, but we're going to review the critical areas of our plan and gather your feedback because that is where we're going to start with this process. Um, so this is the cover of our strategic plan. Brave minds, bold leaders, and big dreams. We have a multi-year plan, a five-year plan that we are aligning our mission, our vision, and the strategies that we hold near and dear to what we believe is going to move our program, move our students, and ultimately have the best, the, a better outcome for our students. Uh, so the mission is here, come on the other side because it's a little blurry. Um, this is a page from our strategic plan book. The left side, on my left side, shows the mission, the vision, the equity statement. And the right side shows some data about our district, who we are. So the mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to empower learners with the knowledge and skill necessary to choose their own pathways and follow their own passions with courage and confidence. So as a system, this is what we aim to do. The vision of our district is that we aspire to be learner-centered, a learner-centered community that fosters passion-driven lives. Learning-centered applies to all stakeholders within our system, not just our students. In our equity statement, we truly believe that all students can achieve at high levels of proficiency and that the effects of institutionalized racism can be mitigated so that, uh, that is central to how equity is viewed in our district so that every student, regardless of circumstance, regardless of background, regardless of prior experiences, can be successful in our system. So we're going to start with the graduate profile. I'm going to start, stop in a minute in order to get your feedback on this graduate profile. Um, we have three main, let me, this, we have three main areas to our graduate profile. We aim to create literate and effective communicators in a multilingual and technological world. I know that is a lot, but that is necessary in the world that we live in currently. Effective communication skills is a must and it, strong literacy skills can take you far. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, the second is that, uh, we should, our graduate profile, we want our graduates to be self-reliant, data-driven decision-makers in this data-rich world that we live in and this competitive economy that we're faced with. And in the third, uh, category for our graduate profile is that we want our students to be effective, empathetic, civic, civic leaders of a multicultural society. We want to shine a light on the fact that our differences make us stronger and that as a society, we're empathetic and we think about others as well. So we are going to turn and talk. You can talk to folks at your table, you can, you're probably hot, you can stand up and move around, um, find a place to have a conversation. But what we'd like you to talk about is, uh, what experiences do our students and staff need to achieve these goals in our graduate profile? And what should schools and our programs offer to support these goals? So I've listed the three goals here for your reference. And, um, Veronica, if you could share the link in the chat for the virtual group, there is a, a form that they can use to share their information as well. But we'd like you to use your post-it notes. And write down on your post-it notes, your ideas or the results of your discussions about what experience should we really focus on in order to achieve these things for our students? So we're going to just have five minutes here. And then we have two more to go through, but we'll go through those quickly so that we can have our whole time for questions. So if you, uh, want to get started with just having the discussion and Veronica, uh, let's see, can I get to that? There we go. All right, we're counting down five minutes. Let's take five minutes, have conversation. And we'll put some more posters around so that you can record for us your ideas to take back to Cabinet and our board.
Good, how are you?
I heard you went traveling for a while.
I did. It was amazing.
Literally, literally.
Here, and there, um, goal one to one three. If you just stick your post-its on where the goal you're committing on, we're for those. And there's also a QR code that you could use at a later time on a little sheet. So if you don't get all of your ideas down to the post-its, you can also use the QR code to share them at a later time.
So one of them would be, um, education, so it could be, um, yeah, but it, it doesn't necessarily, it's expanding. How many different languages do we speak in? They actually have sixty different languages. One thing, we don't want to do like, uh, yeah. Even if it's going to multiple, different schools. Final which teachers speak or planning to just include that. For instance, they pray, they'll be up by maybe about twenty percent. Our big to be, they have a cultural there. That's one opportunity to show that there's teachers there. Or even have museums.
Okay.
And at the same time, that whole, we talk about teacher education. Because if the teacher language, if the language, if the teacher's not educated and they're not, then you're trying to. One of the things that, like, some of the restricted money should go towards is higher and younger, younger, giving young influence of the environment. That would be a good, good, um, yeah. I know we have a, we have a little. I, 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 I want to, you guys click my topic, well, we, it took us twelve, ten years to get a, to get them to be. And we don't know how long it's going to last. But because it's transient, I can see where you're, the dynamic for you also to the child. The other thing is, what, how do you, how do you enhance? Be on my senior call. So we're talking about the challenges that we'll have and how we can improve it. Making suggestions, making suggestions of how we can, so we're in goal one. Um, so are we going to do goal two also?
Okay, so if you were able to write some ideas on a sticky, we want to ask that you get them on the posters. Uh, but I also want to emphasize, you can use that QR code. We would really like to record your ideas so that we can bring them forward, uh, in the process.
So if these fellows are not, we need to have a proper leadership, we have leadership role. One of the things that we do know, probably, is that we have all these guys. Like you said, you don't, you're training, you don't, you're training, you're taking critical leadership, right? But you're responsible, guys, here's the whole. The nervous team responsible, guys, here's the whole
Okay, that's time, I wanna just take about, uh, ten more minutes and go through the other areas with you, so that we can then dig into the deeper questions. Before I get started on the other three areas, each of you should have Each of you should have, um, picked up or have near you, um, a recording sheet for your feedback. So we aren't really gonna have time to give you five minutes to fill out each of the areas. But as you listen, you need a pen, you could raise a hand, we'll bring one to you. As you listen to the discussion about the, we're gonna go over the three major goals of our strategic plan. Um, what's most important for me tonight is getting the, your feedback on these areas. So as you listen, if you could just use your pen and start to record some feedback, then we'll be able to recapture time for the discussion that I know will be so rich. Alright, so we'll get started. So if there's anybody who doesn't have a form or needs a pen, just raise a hand and we'll get one to you. Alright, are we all settled? Alright, so thank you for your feedback, I'm encouraged by all of the post-its. If you haven't had a chance to put yours up, don't worry, you'll have an opportunity at the end to do so. And feel free to write more feedback to add to the Alright, so we're gonna move into the strategies, and I'm going to, I'm not going to read them to you for the sake of time, but I did a summary of, uh, what each of these strategies encompass. So the first strategy in the strategic plan is our focus on authentic engagement. And what we're looking at in this goal is using communication as a lever to foster improved outcomes. So what we'd like to do here is ensure that we are not only building effective communication skills with our students, but that as an organization, we model that and provide that across all areas of service. So there are specific strategies that we will do with this goal. Um, the first strategy is we'd like to have child-centered communication. More discussion with our educators and our staff members, with our families and community members, to really rally around supporting the success of our students more intentionally. Uh, the second strategy focuses on consistent communication. We want our families and our communities to understand and be engaged on a regular basis with not only what's happening in our schools, but also being a part of the meetings in which we make decisions about our schools. The next strategy we focus on is we wanna use the communication tool to empower not only our students, but also our families. So what kind of ways can we do that across our system? And then the final strategy for using the communications as a lever to foster improved outcomes is to make community connections. We have a new, well, not new, but we have a renewed focus on community partnerships across all of our schools. We wanna make sure that we capture that in our plan moving forward, to strengthen that and make sure that as a as an organization, um, we are working together in unison for the best outcomes for our students. So we're going to, there is one, the top of your sheet actually asks these questions. So that we can understand as a community, um, what your input is on what's the best ways and which to communicate with you, what works for you. So if you don't mind taking your own sheet, you don't have to put names on these, these are anonymous. But we do wanna be able to share with our communications department and other departments across our system, what you prefer in terms of communication. The first question just asked the most effective form to communicate with you. What do you prefer that initial contact to be from, text, email, website? Phone, in person, what do you prefer? Um, the second question just asked your preferred method of receiving progress data about your student. Or if you're a student, receiving progress data from your teachers about how you're doing. Do you wanna look that up on your own? On one of our online platforms like Power School or Google Classroom? Or do you prefer that the teacher actually, or the communicator actually, give you a written account of what is happening? Or, are you someone who prefers to have in-person conversation, or you wanna phone call, or you wanna have impromptu conversation with your educators? And then the last question is your preferred method of receiving ongoing information. How do you get your information? Do you go to our website? Do you use our social media platforms? Are you, um, looking for a text or an email reminder? Uh, Parent Square has been super effective for us, uh, but we do know that we need to, um, ensure that that is the platform that's working for everybody. Alright, so we're gonna move on to goal two, which is universal and accessible systems. Again, we're gonna summarize what's in our strategic plan by pointing out that what we aim to do here is align systems to our core values and our desired outcomes. We wanna ensure that our system is working for everyone, because that is how we'll achieve success. Um, we can do that by demonstrating equitable prac- practices uh, from our, not only our employees, but also our community partners and having that open communication. We want to have effective, ongoing staff training so that our teacher, uh, teachers and our staff members are working to ensure that they're using the best strategies to make our system accessible. And we also wanna focus on mutual respect and communication. Customer service, or great customer service is what we expect. Because especially for our parents who entrust their children with us, we know that the way in which we communicate makes all the difference in how comfortable you are leaving your students in our care. So, on your forms, there's three questions, um, that we'd like you to think about, I wish you had time to discuss them. Um, but if you could, just jot down some information. Um, I see evidence of equity in the following areas, dot, dot, dot. It can be as short or as lengthy as you'd like, if that's an area you can speak to. Number two, I'm concerned about equity in the following areas. And number three, my parent, sorry, no S there, my parent experience would be enhanced if. What would help you? So if you can report your thoughts in those areas as we move through, and during our budget discussion a little later, so, uh, you can still continue to write. I wanna review the last goal, which is goal three, relentless attention to achievement, agency, and access. And summarizing that strategic goal, what we aim to do is have in effective instructional programming for all students. And what that looks like in terms of strategies is that we are in the practice of consistently having data-driven instructional plans at all of our schools and all of our classrooms. That we have ongoing professional learning for our educators who are providing the instruction to our students. That we ensure that we have effective core curriculum, that the initial instruction is meaningful and, um, yielding the results that we'd like to see for all students. We also wanna focus on project-based learning. We know that students learn in different ways, and we wanna ensure that as we deliver instruction, create programs, and decide on curriculum, that students have opportunity to learn in different ways. So then we have feedback on that goal, right? Um, again, writing down your experience or your wish or your feedback. Uh, the first, um, prompt is, the academic program could use more, that, that, that. The second prompt, students would benefit from more, that, that, that. The third prompt, parents need more information about. Fill in the blank, and the last one, the student experience would be enhanced if, fill in the blank. Um, we left those questions open for you, because personally, I feel like if we give you multiple choice, we're putting you in a box, that's not the best way to get information. So I know we're asking a lot of you, but if you do take the time to fill those out, we will thoughtfully review and consider them as we move forward, so please consider doing that for us. Now I wanna open it up to our open budget discussion, which is, I'm sure why many of you are here tonight. I wrote down some guiding questions that might help you to, um, come up with questions or suggestions. We're not just about answering questions, we wanna hear what ideas you have, um, for us to consider for future budget planning. We also wanna hear what suggestions you have for effective communication about our budget specifically. How can we keep you informed? How can we keep you engaged? We also want, uh, to know what you, what resources you value. What do you think should be given highest priority as we move through these budget discussions? And also what resources might we consider for future discussion and analysis? What do you want us to look deeper into as we move forward with decisions? And then what topics would you like to see explored further as we prepare for these discussions? These are my questions, I'm sure you have questions of your own, and we're ready to take those now. Uh, if you just raise a hand, sure.
Uh, I was just wondering how you guys, like, choose between which sports, um, to cut from when, like, looking at our budget?
Great question, so we have not actually had any discussions about cutting any sport. But I can give you general information about when we look at programs, what are we looking for? In terms of the analysis of the program and its effectiveness. Sports is a difficult one, because you cannot quantify the benefits of the, uh, on a team participating in a sport. So, the experiences that students get from being a part of sports team, is it measurable? I have four children at home, all play sports, my husband is a coach, I'm all about sports, right? However, we do have to look at our fiscal reality when we look at our sports budget. I want to, I don't think I have any high school principals in here, but I wanna commend all the high school principals, because this year, in order to make sure that we had a budget that wasn't upside down, our high school principals are, um, actually sharing in the cost of transportation for sports. Because one of the areas in which all sports budgets were overspent is buses, right? We invested in the vans, when we learned that many years ago, that's why we have vans at every high school, in order to try to mitigate the cost of transportation. Um, so we look at the cost of the program, there is no way to measure the benefit of the program, they are all beneficial, right? Um, and I don't know where we land on that, we don't have any plans right now to cut any sports. But we are having conversations about all programs. So, I welcome your feedback on how you think we should best do that. Because really what we look at is the expense of a program, and also how much some programs pay for themselves, because they have large fanbases. Other programs have large expenditures and a small fanbase. Our hope as a district is that they balance out, so that it doesn't matter what your sport is bringing in. But the reality is, we don't have infinite numbers of, of resources for sports, so we do have to make difficult decisions, but we're constantly looking for ways to do that and retain all sports, which is why principals are helping with transportation this year, because we were not willing to cut any sports. So that was a compromise. So if you have other ideas about compromises, I think that will help. Uh, right now, sports are mostly funded through measure Yes, and that helps, but the reality is, measured T is paying for many things. And I know many of you in the room know that our staff got raises, right? The cost of renting equipment, the cost of equipment upkeep. With the rise of inflation, all of the expenses have gone up, but the measured T revenue has not gone up. So we're needing to balance things, and we're effectively doing that now, and we hope to effectively continue that in the future. Thank you for the question, yes.
Hi, uh, let me tell you that actually, the aquatics programs at WCCUSD have been trying to get canceled for about the past year. So, um, the spring swimming program, the pool costs were not, uh, not wanting to be paid for, uh, some of the people from Genol went to these board meetings to talk about that. And eventually they relented and did pay them. Um, similarly, the, uh, the school wide, district-wide athletic director said that we can't spend any money on outside, outside facilities, meaning the pools for aquatic programs. So for the water polo program, very late, actually, on the day that the practices were supposed to start, they actually agreed to fund that, and they said they're not funding the swimming programs in the spring. So, um, this is a reality that we're living. And in terms of quantifying the benefits that you get from sports, for aquatics programs, I can count fifteen of our students, our lifeguards, on a water polo team only, that are lifeguarding, teaching swim lessons at pools in Richmond, pools in Berkeley, pool in, uh, in El Cerrito. That they are teaching the kids, they're, they're giving kids water safety. You know, during the pandemic, when those programs weren't in place, the programs that the pools had that served the whole community, they really decreased. So now, we've had a few years, and the programs are back and running well. And that's a huge issue for equity as well throughout the community. A lot of the, the highest death rates due to drowning happen to be some of the minority groups that we have, you know, in our, in our community here, so a lot of us are here because of the aquatics program, and I just wanted to set the record straight on some of those things.
Thank you for sharing that information. I can tell you, the business office has never asked not to have a swimming contest. The, the narrative that we've been trying to cut swimming is a false narrative. Let me tell you what the real narrative is. Um, and I'm gonna be just completely transparent with you, because that is how I deal with things. Um, when we were reconciling the expenses for the athletics budget, what we found is there was zero dollars budgeted for pool rental. So, the hiccup that was experienced, and what was communicated to you about paying the rental fee, didn't have anything to do with us withholding money, and had everything to do with the fact that when those invoices came in, there was zero dollars allotted to pool rental. Now, could have been an oversight. I wasn't in the seat, I started as a CBO July first. Those invoices were coming in from the prior year, and then new invoices were coming in for the upcoming year. So there are some systems things there that need to be worked out, both with our county, I'm sorry, our city partners that lease their pool to us. And you're El Cerrito, but I'll tell you, I went down to the Hercules Pool and talked to their pool manager, because they had two years of invoices that they never submitted for payment. Right? And then we needed to pay the prior invoices and find money for the current invoices. So I just wanna set the record straight and say, we have never said we're canceling swimming. But what did happen is there was zero dollars budgeted for pool rental. There was money budgeted for coaches, there was money budgeted for supplies, and what's needed for the sport. But there was no money for pool rentals. When we found that out, we had to find some money. But we were last year trying to put nineteen million, trying to write our budget. So to find money for all of our pool, pro, for all of our pool rentals, when it wasn't pre-planned, I did have some difficult conversations with the athletic director about that. And maybe he thought it wasn't gonna happen, but of course, we cannot cancel a sport that we're in the middle of developing in a school year, so the cancellation was never a threat, the fact was, there was no rental budget. We have a rental budget this year. It is what we do, we sit with our athletics department and we create the budget. So this year, we knew to make sure they put in a line item for student. So there won't be those issues this year. We haven't even started talking about what is gonna be cut, because we're going through this purpose-based budget. So we're deciding what we're going to dig deep into looking at. As we move further, we haven't had any cut discussions this year, and last year, we paid all those fees and funded the program.
So the program is fully funded this year?
It is, it's fully budgeted.
Fully budgeted.
It was funded last year, it wasn't funded.
But it was funded, I mean, this is, it's not like these programs came out of, you know, that, that
I agree.
Wasn't a budget last year, you don't know about the previous year. That, money that was paid the previous year has got budgeted.
To be honest, I think that it was an innocent oversight, but it was an expensive problem to solve. Uh, I have to, I know for a fact that each rental, well, the Hercules rental was about ten grand and we were two years in arrears. I don't know about the other pools. I know we use Contrapasca and several other pools. I think we have four or five rental contracts. I'd have to examine each one of them to tell you what the overall amount is. Um, but as the invoices came in, we found one to pay.
Okay, and to tell them how expensive is that and what interest they have.
Well, the the, it depends on the 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 um actual sport, right? Something like basketball, we have gyms. We don't have to pay rental for gyms. We have baseball fields. We don't have to pay rental for that, right? So uh, we do, yeah, absolutely. However, our own district people are maintaining those, the same people that, you know, so it isn't that we wouldn't have gardens if it wasn't for. We didn't purchase gardens for fields, but they do maintain them. So we have to do, and I'm happy to do that if you'd like to dig in. Uh, but every sport has its own budget and every sport brings in different revenue. To mitigate some of the issues with sports this year, this past year, we started collecting a percentage of the GoFan money from the sports that do have it um lots of spectators. So that the collection of universal GoFan money could go back into the program and fund some of the things in the in the athletics department that we need. So that was a creative solution last year. This year, we're thinking about recapturing a little bit more of that GoFan money. But we also don't want to take revenue from the schools and the programs because some of them count on it. But the reality is, we're a unified school district and we'd like all of our schools, part of our equity, right? We'd like all of our schools to have quality sports programs. Some schools have huge sports programs. Other schools in the same sport may have a small amount of people supporting their program. We value both. So we're trying to figure out how to creatively ensure that we can still sustain all of those programs. Because we do know that is what draws people to our schools. It enhances the student experience. It supports them with their social emotional growth. We are not attacking sports. We're just trying to budget effectively to make sure we can have them and have the net worth. All right, yes.
I think you kind of, it's pretty clear that it sounds like it was just a misunderstanding. The the way it was communicated, or I should say not communicated to the parents, was very alarming. It was like a lot of rumors and it was like, we were talking about transparency and communication. It felt really bad. Um, so I'll just say that and it's good that we're having this conversation now. Um, as far as comparing comparing costs, I know that this is, we're getting into some details now, but it feels a little unfair to know that that pools have not been invested in historically in this district. We built gyms, we built all these other things. And so the other sports may seem like they're free or cheap because they weren't even invested in. Whereas aquatics has always been kind of an offsite, so of course you're gonna have fees, but you're saving all the money. We should have a pool on site. Um, couple other quick things. Aquatics is one of the only sports that actually is incredibly, incredibly inclusive. I mean, the kids can come onto the team literally having never been in a pool before swimming. That does not happen with any other, you can just go off on the basketball in the small team. So I don't have a right here, we'll teach any kid how to swim from scratch, so it didn't create a thing. And it's great that these are the people that actually teach all of our next generation how to do it. And so we're talking about a generational problem. We're gonna fight it all out. This is our opportunity, which is already a pretty underserved, uh, quantity that's been pretty, pretty underserved here. Um, and the other thing is just equity wise and I know we're not taking this yet. But the notion that you would sort of pick one or two and cut them out and have others not impacted. I'm very good for saying that, but that feels absolutely unbelievable. And 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 obvious, but around about be like, okay, we're having some problems budget-wise. Future new sports, we need to find a way to save five percentage. So let's everybody go to where we go, let's do some renegotiation, let's lean in. And you know, let let's do this in a much more fair and equitable way. And I don't think that's where this is headed. I mean, we we understand, we think everybody wants what's right. We're not trying to take out other sports. You know, everybody I think wants what's right for all the kids. And from what I read, there actually is data saying that participation in sports, clubs, really anything, that puts a kid in a huge school from being just swimming around and feeling really lost to feeling engaged in a group, that actually does provide attendance. It supports mental health. It supports all diversity. Like it supports teamwork, it supports leadership, like it's and I think there is actually data around that. But you know, when you're gonna put a kid in a huge school like this, the way that kid's gonna thrive and engage is because they find a niche. And we have to have space for them to thrive.
I agree. Any more time? Yeah.
Actually, through this process, we um we ended up talking to a lot of facilities because we thought maybe we would have to recover the cost to keep the project running. And those cities, as we've heard from CCC in El Cerrito, are willing to negotiate those contract rights and the pricing. So if there is something to look forward to, I would recommend. Because one of the things is that there's many people that kind of work with these facilities to actually work at the price. And I think actually trying to find someone individual or somebody to actually drive an active on to either to a facility to five, six places, to find out what they can negotiate down. Because I know El Cerrito, for example, when I've heard from the Fennel Valley Coach, they're willing to negotiate very different pricing for those facilities that help keep with students in the water and they provide a necessary.
It's a great idea. Yes.
I'm from Fennel Valley, um, and I just want to, while you guys are considering these conversations, to offer that to you, that these are the kids that aren't able, I mean, my daughter's in water polo and she plays schools. That's like the other, you can see the difference inside. So when you have these kids that are showing up, they may be fewer in number, but it's because they don't have facilities that are on site. So uh I have my opinion about the district choosing to place, you know, multimillion dollars, you know, football fields, baseball field, softball field. Yes, you can create, you can generate more money with GoFan because the facilities are on site and we can motivate. These kids that are showing up for swimming water polo, they are making concerted effort to physically get there every single day, to show up for the games that are all over the place. Um, so you have a smaller number of families that are actually capable of doing that. But we wanna talk about competitiveness and keeping our kids here. When we see these other schools on the side of it, we want competitive kids and we don't have access to the facilities at our schools when we can't do it. So our C D numbers aren't going up by not funding programs. It's going down because we're looking for ways to keep our students competitive with other districts who have the exact way to do it. Who chose when rebuilding all these high schools to place the pool at the fight other people. So in these conversations about considering budget and the, you know, the number of kids that are participating and the effectiveness of these programs, please do also consider those extremely important factors that you have the strength and the number of kids that you do without having direct access to these facilities by this reason.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh, I I understand a little bit about swim and water polo. Um, my, I live in Solano County. My son went to American Canyon. His best friend, if you're in swim, you may know him, Gabe Quiva, uh, was a state board winner. Got a fellowship for swim and we attended many of his his swim meets. So I'm, I understand the swim culture and I respect your advocacy for the swim culture. Yes.
I just wanna talk about my personal involvement in water polo. Um, my freshman year, I didn't know how to swim at all and I joined, I called the coach, um, Star and I said, is this available for me? And then she was like, you're running hazard. Um, and I joined the team and the coach was Greg, he's here in the California swimming season. Um, welcomed me with open arms and my background, my family's not for to put me in club swimming or like anything like that when I was younger. Um, and so having like a space to um put myself in this community and put myself out there. And like, I took public transportation every single day, like at nighttime after water polo. Took me like an hour and a half to get home because I live in North Richmond and so the seventy-six doesn't work that late. So I have to take the three seventy-six and it's just like that amount of work that I put into going to get to the swim center, like commuting home and there, just to be with the people that like support me in the um in the sport meant a lot to me and taking it away. And like, that would just create an unfair advantage compared to like everybody else in the district and others as well.
Okay, we have a few more minutes. I hear you clearly, SwamTee. Uh, do we have any other questions? It's eight o'clock. I don't wanna, um, I wanna make sure everybody's voices are getting their comment. Uh, I I, our superintendent is here and several of our board members are here. They've heard your comments. I will reiterate, there has not been a suggestion to cut swim or to cut water polo. That is not, that's a myth, okay? But I have already been transparent with you about what the budget issue was last year, okay? Just with there not being a line item. So I don't want you to believe that you, we value all students, all sports and all experiences related to it.
I have a question. One, uh, so it seems to me that this will be your twenty-six and twenty-seven is not a good impact. So if we are able to resolve our budget issue, there's not gonna be a budget issue.
Well, I wish I could say that with certainty. What I can say is that if we make these cuts, we're able to achieve our cut target for the uh twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we'll be in a better budget position. Will we also hope happens at the same time is that we increase our ADA? That we have an increase in revenue as well and that we're able to do what we can to keep our operating costs down. All of those things will improve our budget outlook and if our budget outlook improves, then perhaps there won't be a need to cut. But if we don't realize additional revenue or if our projections are not in line with what happens with the economy, we may have to make cuts in the out year as well. Right now, we are relying on reserves for each of the next three years. So after that third year, as we move along, I would encourage you, we give an interim presentation um in December and again in March. And during those presentations, we present what's fluctuated in the budget. And so if you tune into those meetings, you'll understand whether our budget outlook is getting better or not. And I think that's how that question would be answered. Um, but what I'll say is, I've heard from our board members and our superintendent loud and clear, we don't wanna cut programs that are gonna impact the student experience. So our goal is not to do that. Um, so we're here because we want to find ways not to need to in, to analyze those programs. Does that make sense?
The conversation has been so high level that it's very hard for me to understand what programs are on the table or what even to discuss.
Yeah. So there aren't any programs on the table yet. Right, so we're at the very beginning of the purpose-based budget process. We're getting information. We had one budget subcommittee meeting where we also rolled out the process. We're now in the phase two of the process. We're next budget committee meeting. We're gonna present data to them. They wanna look at our staffing levels. They wanna look at um the cost of different services and events that are supplemental. Um, we wanna turn over every rock to see where we might be able to trim our expenditures. We are not looking for programs to cut. We're looking for other ways that are kept away from our students, away from our classroom. Um, but we don't know yet if we're gonna be successful meeting that cut targets. So I have to be transparent and tell you, you know, it would be helpful to follow those budget meetings to see how far we get. Last year, we had a goal to cut um contracts to achieve a majority of our fiscal solvency um reduction target. We weren't able to, because the majority of the contracts were on the restricted side of the house. So we found very few contracts, even though we have millions and millions of dollars we spend out every year in contracts, the majority of them were were paid with that restricted money. So that meant we then had to look at staffing and other things to find where we could trim. So we aren't starting with student programs and we hope not to get there because the charge is clear. That we can't afford to cut anything for our schools and um for our student experience and we don't want to do that. Um, but we need to see this process through to see what we uncover, okay? Yes.
Um, I would just like to add on to what she said. Also, especially this year, since we don't have buses, a lot of our parents have stepped up for the water polo team. We have games that are like an hour away, thirty minutes away, and they drive us all the way over there, stay for our games and drive us back. Like, I just wanna like put that out there to show like how important the sport is not only to the players, but the parents. Cause they're seeing their students excel, or not their students, sorry, their kids like excel in so many ways. Like for me, for example, I was like such a hard to believe, but a shy like kid growing up. And like, um, now because of the sport, like I feel so much more confident, not only in myself, but like with the people around me. So these parents like give us the help that we need when we needed it. Without the parents, we would have no way to be getting to the games because we didn't have buses this year. So I just wanna put that out there that like, most of the sports at the school, like, like you said, there's a softball field or football field, they can just walk to their games. But our games are an hour away sometimes, or thirty minutes away, depending on traffic, because we have to usually take the freeway. So without the parents, we would have literally no way to get to the game.
Yes.
I wanted to follow up on his question, uh, regarding budget outlook. Uh, towards the beginning of the presentation, you showed that uh employees' salary benefits are like
Eighty-two point nine.
Yeah, almost eighty-three percent of the budget. Uh, t- teacher vacancies are a problem that this district's facing. How much of the vacant positions does that account for? And is it possible to reallocate that money later on in the school year to not have to tap into reserve funding?
So when we have a teacher vacancy, we still need a teacher. We still have to pay somebody. So a teacher vacancy, we don't completely save all of that money from that vacant position. We sometimes, we sometimes have to bring back retired teachers and we have to pay those retired teachers per diem, which usually exceeds what we would pay a new hire. So there are lots of pushes and pulls that have to go with the vacancy picture. What I will say is where there's a vacancy, there's usually a benefit savings. Because if we don't have a permanent employee, chances are we're paying someone a daily rate or an hourly rate or we're just paying them to work for us temporarily, which means we don't pay health and welfare benefits for those people. So where we may have budgeted health and welfare for a vacant position, we do realize those monies back into the general fund. Uh, unfortunately, what we found is that as we work through our budget, that's an area in which we have a savings, but there are other areas that are overspent. So there's this constant push and pull at every one of our interim periods to examine what happened with each resource and what happened with each expenditure. And on a, you know, if if there is a slight chance that we might save some money, which you saw this year, we had a balance that we're able to roll over the next year, right? Um, so that's not such an easy question to answer because there are lots of moving parts. But what I will say is every penny that we have, we're always looking to ensure, number one, that we can um, cover our obligations, pay our bills. And then number two, that we can free up um money in the budget to give programs and departments more to do more with, right? We haven't been in that position for a while because of our structural deficit, but that is where we aim to be. All right, we're five minutes over, but I can take one more question. Yes.
If I could just make a comment?
Yes.
The budget committee meetings are recorded and they're on the district's YouTube channel. So if you go to Google and you type in YouTube, let's talk about this, all the meetings open up. And you can screen load accurately.
I think I might have them on the slide. Okay, so this is the next step. There is a budget committee meeting October twenty-second. Sorry, yes. So the next time that the budget subcommittee is gonna meet is October twenty-second. We're gonna be looking at a cost analysis of specialized programs and services and contracts. We're gonna review staffing levels and We're gonna review staffing levels and we're gonna look at district needs. Um, we'll also discuss the process for the needs assessment and reduction analysis. Okay, so this is gonna be an important meeting to move our work forward. And then we'll have another budget community forum the following week. What I aim to do in these meetings is also share them here and get more information to further develop the process and to ensure that community ideas are infused in the decisions that were hap- the, the decision, decision-making process and, you know, looking at, um, where we need to analyze. So, uh, this meeting is at Deanza High School. And Veronica, can you, where is the? The twenty, October twenty-second is in the Deanza High School library and October twenty-ninth is also Deanza High School library. Um, so you're invited to attend those in person or we have a link where you can listen in or participate virtually. Hey, I want to see our cabinet. Thank you for your support tonight. They came to help answer questions and hear your thoughts and ideas. Is there anybody from cabinet that has anything to add? All right, um, Dr. Hirsch, you wanna close in a moment?
I just want to emphasize what, um, Dr. Melvin shared about, uh, the aquatic program. Uh, we know that, uh, women will, uh, sometimes, but we just want to share that view. I guess it certainly noted an intent and there's never any conversation at my level or Dr. Melvin's level about cutting that program. I did get wind of that, um, maybe a few weeks ago, but I'm glad that Dr. Melvin's was able to clear, clarify that for the lower end. But thank you for the questions, students. I really appreciate it.
All right. And with that, I can stick around if anybody has specific questions, but I know we're all a little hot. I've really thoroughly enjoyed the conversation. I appreciate your feedback. Everybody in the room is, uh, in a position to take your feedback, consider it and, um, help with the process moving forward. So I appreciate your time tonight and thank you for coming. Thank you, Dr. Melvin. I'm out.
I have a question.
Okay, and put tables back in chairs and all of this stuff. You know, like, are we having?
I will.